So I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh four P M. I am going to read the remote meeting script guidelines. So as a preliminary matter, this is Aaron Van De Steen, the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee of the Grafton for the Library Trustees. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on agenda are present in the hearing. Members, when I call you in, please respond to affirmative. Debbie.
Yeah.
And Beth.
Yeah.
So, good evening. This open meeting of the African Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find on the town website at www.crafton-ma.gov, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless the participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. This, for this meeting, the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee is convening by a Zoom video conference as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that take care not to screenshot your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Also, the materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website, unless otherwise noted. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know it otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda before we do so. Permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate reading minutes. I will introduce and speak on the agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to meet your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name for speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair. Take care to identify yourself. And so, public comment, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will read the first public comments, questions received in advance of the meeting, by the real-time board and/or applicant responses. Public comments during the meeting will be conducted through the chat feature in Zoom. Then I will read real-time comments, questions typed by computer participants in the chat feature, followed by real-time board applicant responses. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So, the second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from April 3, 2023. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
A question made in secondary discussion. So I only have one question. Did we start the meeting at seven thirty? This is, I called the meeting to order at seven thirty P M.
We started that, we started late, because you had something.
Okay. Any other?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing then, all in favor, Aaron, I, John, I, Debbie?
Debbie, I.
And Beth. Great, I declare the motion carrier. Okay, now onto ongoing business. We have the draft art policy. So do we want to continue calling it draft art policy, or is it called art policy?
Sorry, should we do art exhibit, display policy?
Well, right, we don't call everything a draft food or kitchen policy, or I just wondered if that was going to be the final name of it, for some reason, but I don't understand, like, maybe it's an art terminology or something. It just, it's still in draft, that's all it means, and no problem, okay? Great, so where are we with the art policy?
We had a question about how to award it for exhibit purposes, if basically, nobody's allowed to climb on a ladder.
Yeah.
But we don't have custodial, but we can direct. So I did check in with legal and with William Blake, Assistant Town Administrator, and he advised just to have some kind of line, like, I mean, it's a form for you, we assist with getting it.
Yeah.
And we don't need to specifically start with procedure, which is, we'd be trying to get away from procedural stuff and see anything.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things that I kind of feel like you want it to be fully, fully in production, right? You want it to operate exactly as the policy states, but a lot of times, it's going to be best effort, right? Whether you can have resources from the library and also from the town in order to get done what you need, so I think as long as it isn't specifically so strict and that we can have a little bit of leeway, then I think apply. So do we need to change?
Yeah, so, so I did, so this latest draft under Section 3, Display, I added in with the coordination of municipal staff on an agreed upon date.
If I can get this, the link from the policy list?
No, because it's not posted.
So, no, I mean, our draft policy list. Or did you attach that one, I'm just trying to pull it up?
It was like the
Oh, I'm not looking.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go.
I think the Excel box, only the ones that have links are ones that we've voted on and put on the website. Because we got everything off the local drive, because it's
Oh, that's right.
I still have a note to emphasize with spaces, I haven't had time to run around and measure anything. We added blocking in this place. I think the blue edits are the new ones since our last meeting. Yeah, so I still have an outstanding action item to measure space. And then we had, I think, agreed to add as time and staffing permits up by the top under selection, so that it couldn't, it was on a monthly basis, locating. So we added that.
And we get to that at some point, and I think this is a great first first round for this policy, for sure. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay. So, that's the work on many additional edits prior to
So I think the edits in red will be those, so we could just approve them. The three blue, four blue ones are mine, there's still the task of size of space. So joining us on, at our meeting tonight, just to observe is our high school intern, Audrey, I, Audrey, and she'll be finishing up a project, and maybe looking for some new projects, so that could be a project for us to do with the measuring tape. The last.
So let's go through the red edits then. We can just agree if it makes sense. Oh, there's, there's Audrey. Oh. Okay. All reasonable attempts will be made to provide the space on an equitable basis. Okay. Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's the appropriate language, then I agree with that edit. And removing regardless of the beliefs or affiliations of individuals or groups of persons. Yeah.
Yeah. This should have been for all, this was just a
Yeah.
And then this time of staffing permit.
Yes, I would agree with one B as well, if you want to all agree to have that one with you right now. She's, she's kind of, I'm doing it. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's having a hard time.
It's definitely a concern, because now her this is probably very maybe short custodial again, which would be our maintenance, which would be our municipal staff, and that would be hanging it.
Yeah.
Looking to a different situation. Technically, we are all, we're municipal staff, so that's why we're not, that's true, but it also allows us to, like, you do this, like, there's no I do have a thank you to custodial who hung up the four panels that we have from our mind-body-spirit art project from during the pandemic. We found out that the art rail was full, we had a little bit of time, and there's two down at the front of the lobby, and two upstairs over the computer, so the public can come in and see it, and for now, we have a display, so it's, it was, you know, library staff projects.
I love to see that.
Yeah, you know, very cool. So that's, that's there, and it will stay up until people visit, start vetting requests, and get the rest of the art railing, like, I think we're supposed to be selling here space to other spaces.
Yeah. By the way, I love the lights right behind Debbie's camera. It kind of looks like some 1980s, kind of, you know, zigzag style.
Pay the court this tomorrow, like, some weird Star Wars. Very cool, um.
So I think we're agreed to keep, to keep that change. Debbie, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Seems to be some kind of a fragment.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so I'm glad they caught that, it's a great I can go. Yeah, considered, it's just language, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Are you following law? You're not, because I'm approving stuff and you're not looking.
No, that's okay, I'll be
Yeah, we do want you to approve the language too, so we can slow down if you want. So that you want to leave it as a it's fine, if you only leave it as a note, because we're not finalizing the policy quite yet. Yeah. The exhibitor will should come in. Yeah, well, that's some good legal language.
Instead of spelling out what's already in an existing policy approved by legal and the board, you're just referencing the policy, and when it goes online, there'll be a link to the pursuit. We don't want to make it look like we're
Yes.
hosting or endorsing
Yeah.
particular artists' work, we're simply providing the space. So that's what undermarketing publicity B is for.
Yeah, this is about, this is about the logo. That artist can't put the library's logo on something, make sure that we were yeah, for us to help in generate the content. Don't we have, don't we have something like that? Yeah, they just changed the language. All right. I agree.
Name and address is a part of all of our, it's an icon. Yes, but address and hours would need to be added. I think this, you know, like my abbreviation, PR. And then there's our for reasonable accommodations. I'll see that we added it. Well, that's it, so just a definition of spaces.
So pretending, pretending we have the size of the spaces. So what is that requirement specifically? So you're noting what the spaces are. So is it really important to have in this policy?
I mean, it could be a separate informational sheet provided for an exhibitor, but I would say that, like, on our website, for our meeting room booking, it lists only amenities for each room, it has pictures of potential layouts, it tells how many seats are available, so so ideally, if someone were looking at this policy and it says, "Community room has exhibit space", it would say you would have X number of linear feet or square feet to display something, to put in the dimensions of the display cabinet. I mean, we can decide, that doesn't matter. But I think it would be helpful for a person who wanted to hang art to know how many pictures of things they have around for.
Yeah, I think it's important to have that, for sure. Yeah, I'm just wondering if it needs to be spelled out the dimensions right here in this policy.
Or on our website, you know, we've got, like, a reserve, I think, is heading on our website, there's a museum passes, reserved meeting rooms, that have reserved art exhibit and displaying space, and the page would have the link to the policy, pictures of the spaces, and the dimensions.
Yeah, so I think what I'd, what I'd like is even if you want to add the spaces, like, after we leave, I mean, we're not approving this policy, the Board of Trustees approves it, but if you want to get that information ready to put in here, I think it's fine here, or in the amendment is fine, but I'd like this to go to the, to the board, not for the next week's meeting, but for the, for the May Wednesday meeting. It wasn't Yeah, generally, as the chair, I don't, I wouldn't make the motion anyway. You guys can consider the big one. Yeah?
So, yeah, so we want to make a motion to approve, I guess, to, so I'll make a motion to approve policy and to be presented to the larger Board of Trustees that are later
It's the art, the policy.
The art exhibit and display policy.
First.
Yeah. And okay, motion made a second, any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor of the motion, Aaron, I, John?
I.
And Debbie?
Debbie, I.
And Beth?
Beth, I.
Good, awesome, this is a, this is a big one for us. Thank you. Not at the moment, yes.
I figured if someone's offering, there's a reason, so.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the food, food slash kitchen policy. Like, Beth has got that. Okay, so, um, so what's the status of this particular? Is this comeback from legal?
No, so we had gotten feedback from Board of Health, and I thought there was a question about they had gone through point by point, I think then we went through it point by point.
Yeah.
Um, and I think there are any questions, that we want to do something different? And I don't remember who was supposed to edit.
Yeah.
I've been working on the master store commission grant for six weeks. No, I haven't made any changes.
I think we made some significant progress at the last meeting of this one, we made some big changes to the community kitchen. We talked about putting some appropriate signage up, because we weren't sure how people they understood that you can't use it except for, it's really to be used for programming. And just for heating up, not cooking meals. So as long as we feel comfortable with that language, I think at least the community kitchen part should be good, can we take a look at that? Yeah.
We have a disclaimer, it's our kitchen.
Even though, but it's named that somehow in the building plan, yeah.
I mean, it would be part of even like such a thing as a formal community kitchen, where you go to a lot of licensing.
Yeah.
But it is really a catering kitchen.
So I think 4A looks good. And comments in 4A. Okay, 4B, none of all the patients who want to heat up a meal or cook at the library. So, so that's good, I think 4B.
Um, you want to talk about this last part, for any, I mean
Yeah.
It's really, just full stop period, it's just
Yeah, that's, that makes more sense. Yeah, that's like one report C. Okay. I think 4C is good. Or do you get orientation to the kitchen to private report the notices?
This is Let's suggest changing it to maybe required by the Board of Health, because it seems to be local businesses in Grafton. They, they are familiar with, but you know, somebody offsite or from another town, that's when they're like, well, where's your inspection report? Where's your restaurant's food prep, certain certifications?
Yeah, yeah, it must be strong, I'd say maybe maybe required. See, it's very different. I would, do you want to say 4, do you want to spell out 48 hours?
I would rather just keep that out, because that's up to the Board, or to, to the Board of Health or the Worcester. Board of Health. Now, it's not our requirement.
Yeah, yeah. By okay, and 4E? Or F, the screen barriers will not be allowed. Okay. Or G, a cleaning fee will charged if the kitchen is not trash. So like trash, some people might consider that as like, oh, I gotta take my trash with me, but it really means trash disposed of, right?
Access to the dumpster, they would only have, like, they would knot up the bags and leave them outside, in the patio, most likely. So it's not smelling up the room, but in every risk.
Hey, that's fine, we got this trash move then. Yeah, there's no trash receptacles in there that would be appropriate for it, or
There are, so we divide ones with the flex wing legs, it's all covered. You would have to have a fairly large event or gathering for those to fill up, and then we have auxiliary barrels we pull out, but then those are open. And, you know, if somebody has, like, a Saturday night event, it could be sitting for a day, because we wouldn't have custodial again until Monday. I really would, just want to make sure, like, trash is off the floor, trash is off the counters, get it, get it always consolidated into the You can say trash disposed of instead, which really means just clean it up and get it into the
Yeah, I don't like ending sentences with a preposition, though, isn't that right, preposition? Yeah. 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 Yeah, so trash room is okay. Is the checklist of cleaning tasks appended to this policy? Yeah. Would it be? We need to append it to this policy, though?
I think so, like, if you wanted to move it forward to a vote, probably, because, like, our material selection policy, because, like, things are added into it and referred to, and it, we have to vote the whole
Checklist by procedural?
Sure, yes.
Right.
I mean, it's a PC checklist.
So I mean, after, if somebody needs to be changed, that we want to change, or policy.
We heard on it, yeah, checklist of the tests. Yeah, will be made available. Hey, anyone else want to add for kitchens? This is kind of out of my wheelhouse, the food preparation and service. Anybody care to comment?
Under five, food preparation and service, A is about what is required by Board of Health, which is really Worcester Board of Health, but we do an annual permit application, it's about seven pages, that requires the person making the application, if the space has, like, 50 seats or more, which we do, to have a anti choking training. So we have staff who go to a community first aid and CPR, so that's required to have somebody on site, the people are going to be eating in the building at all times, who can do the Heimlich maneuver, and grab an AED. And then there's additional food handler requirements, that you have an allergen aware certificate. So we've got a handful of staff who are certified, so we're not just putting out food that might be unlabeled or a potential danger to somebody who might have a fatal food allergy. And food handler is more a preparation certification, and that's like a step removed from, I think, the next one, that might be food manager, which is like a full day course, I'm thinking about taking. And the idea is, anybody who's prepping food should technically be under the jurisdiction of a food manager, so these are all the Board of Health requirements. Additionally, I think having a crowd manager piece is nice, it's not required, but for our staff to convene a program, like, we're supposed to be getting any program in the community room, remind people what bathrooms are, but more importantly, where the emergency lights are. So it would emit that training. The flight attendant proportion on the evening, that's usually that way, you know, here, there's where the fire, fire pole is, fire extinguisher is there, please make sure we're not blocking them, don't block the exits, go up this way, this way, this way, and the emergency. Thanks for flying Grafton Library. That's not required for the Board of Health food permit. But we also have, like, a sort of a limited food permit, we can, with a food manager, we can prep and serve things on site, so a staff member could run a, kind of make a smoothie class and immediately feed people sandwiches. And a presenter who comes in, if they have their certification, can do the same thing. But if you want to do it for Boy Scouts, and you don't have certification, they'll check the Board of Health. If you're local, they'll probably go, okay. And if, you know, we're going to get something catered in, and again, they want to see, like, the other restaurant chefs certification. Anyway, A is about staff.
Is there something in there too, about, is it a general? Hotluck?
I think I did refer to, yeah, that's the last thing, actually.
Yeah.
So hotluck events is when you're all in agreement that everybody is bringing food prepared offsite, and you have no idea if they wash their hands, if they were aware of the other ingredient that they put in, and potential allergen for situations. Their house was cleaned, if they have Their house was cleaned, if they have pets, how long it sat out. Um, so that's all the food safety training goes. So, but, but there is a potluck rule, but as long as you call the event a potluck, then everybody understands what that means and kind of eats consumes what they're on list. So. Sort of under that. But generally, anything library related is either show me your certification or. Um, you know, and if you don't want to bother with all the certifications, because the cost adds up, like just get it from Stop and Shop, we know it was licensed. And they have regular inspections, so just get a cheese plate from there, but it's more expensive to buy cut up cheese from Stop and Shop than to do it yourself.
Also, that, that is an option.
Yeah, I think that's what. Yeah. I could make that clear. So A is supposed to be about staff. B is members of the public and public meeting, like Boy Scouts and meeting. And C is supposed to be people doing facility rental who are maybe bringing in professional catering because they're having a shop or wedding or, you know, and.
Because I would be the point to. You know, that maybe just some people, right? If they, we don't have to add it here, but like if someone. But, because this list to me is daunting, you know, because I don't understand all the. Uh, the nuance of food manager versus craft manager versus the server or whatever those are. So. Um, as someone looking at rent, I would want to know like, what are my actual options here? And like, you know, five platters from Stop and Shop is a good option, I think, so.
I believe it wouldn't hurt to clarify headings like A is staff, colon. B is public meetings, colon, C is facility rental. Colon.
Yeah, because they all start. Same.
Yeah. So in the difference between in public meeting and somebody to rental is again, like public meeting, anybody can come in and technically every single meeting that this can be in here during operating hours is free and open to the public. So, you know, somebody with a sesame allergy can come in off the street, eat the sesame sticks that you had for a snack at the Board of Trustees meeting and. Need it epic. If they're, you know, got to this, they're alert. Um, but a private meeting presumably like you know your guests, you know, who you're seeing or they know to ask, but there's nobody in charge of it. And I think, I think how the Board of Health may be looking at it, and I don't mean to speak for them, but that a quite a private facility rental is the same as you having a party at your house. Like they're not going to come in your house and say, Debbie, did you watch? Did you get your allergy or allergy training? No, you expect your friends to say, oh, yeah. Wait, that, and the peanuts, don't touch it. Thanks a lot.
Do you have any parties?
Yeah. But you know, so under B, we could add in maybe as the first line that. Food purchased, there's a, there's a wording in the food. From an application, that's like food packaged for individual sale. And because that's usually labeled with everything that's needed and it doesn't necessarily need to be hold it and tell the temperature. But yeah, serving food prepared by a licensed. Caterer entity store, I don't know. Or packaged for individual use is allowed.
Okay.
Isn't a hybrid staff there? We did like a staff thing and where it does opening pack.
It does only because we checked out that box on our food plate. And it will also allow us to have our friends do vending. Because they're also covered, covered as an umbrella under our license. Because again, the expectation, individual packaging is you buy your package from the vending machine, it has the ingredients on it. And it's up to the individuals. And no staff member has touched it, so we're not, there's no chance for cross contamination or any cancer, whatever. It's, it's not, that isn't a money, yeah. I would say for staff, but. But. They're still not supposed to, because it's staff in a public building, they're still supposed to have their allergy training. Because yeah, the difference you make, then we get the vending machine, we're on. And you providing it on a table. So there is like this responsibility over.
I think that was a good discussion. Anything else on uh. Serving, third state and food being brought to the library prepared. Okay. Great. Any further discussion on this policy?
I was looking for chat.
Okay. This one is about legal.
I think so.
Okay.
But if I can get it further out, you know.
Yeah, we could have two policies. Yeah, I, I don't think we need to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. I think we've done our due diligence and I feel it's ready to go. So we can make a motion as such.
I'll make a motion to bring our food beverage and kitchen use policy forward to the upcoming May twenty fourth, Board of Library proceeding for a.
It just provided. Legal doesn't have any significant contributions. I would kick it back to Policy Committee. Okay. Can we kick it back?
Pending legal approval. You have food slash beverage use policy and then I'm. What is the official? It's typically the food beverage and this food slash beverage.
Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aaron, I, John?
John, I.
Debbie?
Debbie, I.
And Beth?
Yeah, I.
Fantastic.
This is a footnote, alcohol is covered under meeting of and facility rental, so it may be referenced here, but it doesn't want to roll on detail for those.
Okay. We're at seven forty two. We're doing good for time. Until this, we have reviewing language and material selection policy. Um, anything specific we want to call out?
Um, I would actually like to request we pass over this and take more time with it because I think it's a hugely important issue. I sent out. Late some documentation to compare our policy to three. To other library policies and to various continuing education type webinars that have. Come out last year, year and a half, specifically regarding such as concerns from the public book banning in libraries, school and public libraries. Uh, and I would like to really feel that we are all informed before we review our own policy and make changes. I, I don't, I think we need to add things in and I don't know what else. Oh, yeah, it looks good. And I feel like there's holes in it.
Yeah, that's a great point. Okay. I'll hear, yeah, I'll hear a motion to. Pass over. Um, I think we need to have a majority vote to pass over unless somebody wants to discuss it, so I'd hear a motion for that.
I'll get motion to table, especially in the new of the material selection.
Okay, any discussion?
That's right. I mean, this is, this is actually a big deal. When it was put in place, has it? There. If it's happening.
Yeah.
Are those materials that you did send out already? Is that not all in place?
I don't know. I was actually looking for meeting members to take up all the documents and make recommendations opposed to me just saying, here's what.
Yeah.
Again, overwhelmed by this huge gap that I just finished. Don't have, I had some time to dedicate to it, but.
Yeah, there was, there was one initial thing that stuck out to me, which was like. It was like time boxing, how quickly you need to. View and like. It, it seemed like it was, I mean, it's an important thing to do, but it seemed like it was very. Rigid in requirements like. Like the first thing is within fourteen working days after the complaint has been made, the library director will make an appointment with the complainant to discuss the reasons, the materials. So, I mean, so I just thought that was a little bit. Too much because like you're busy.
Yeah, but it's vitally important. And this part actually was reviewed, I think, gone. But that was the one change we made only once I got it.
Okay.
I can follow.
No, I just wanted, I mean, I just wanted to, to make sure that that.
Yeah, it was actually a shorter timer, her time turnaround and she said, oh, you can give yourself two weeks. It's okay. But like, I, I know one thing I want to add in is we need to be a wrap business. To get the phone and fill it out and that's not.
Yeah, I guess I was. I don't want to go into it too much, but I was just more thinking that we have the um. The form filled out as like the first measure by the complaint is otherwise. There's no barrier to entry, you know what I mean? And not that there shouldn't be big barriers, but someone should put in the effort, they really feel strongly about and. Not kind of waste your time with meeting if it was not really justified or. Forms.
Yeah. Yeah, so really a discussion on the motion should be whether we pass it over, right? Or not pass it over at that. Sorry, but this is a good, good conversation. Yeah. So I think um, all good discussions so that we should review other policies that are out there and make sure that we're covering all our bases. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of passing over this policy, Aaron, I?
I.
Debbie? And Beth? Okay. The motion carried. So moving on, we have a find free library policy. So. The previous policy committee wrote this in response to um, something we wanted to do during the pandemic. So it's very specific about pandemic. But even before the pandemic, this was something that we were working with various. Groups in the town to socialize their ideas and, and um. You know, make sure it made sense for the town. So. The discussion came down to, it was really up to the, um, the Board of Trustees whether we want to collect fines or not. And so we decided to put this policy in place to. You know, to enact a fine free for us, for Grafton. And then shortly. Many other towns throughout Massachusetts kind of followed suit. So I think we're.
And, and since the C W R membership voted to not have fines at their libraries, and then it was the work of the directors who voted to come back to their libraries and get their boards, to get on board.
Yeah.
Through our whole network, which is a hundred and fifty something number libraries. We're all supposed to be fine free, collecting each other's fines is also a challenge. So.
Yeah.
We're doing, I did toward being one of the. The only change I made to this draft policy is I took out the word pandemic, but I didn't read through the rest to see if there were other things we needed to make.
Yeah, um, I mean, there's not a lot of substance to it, but I think. It, it doesn't really need to be. It's, it's, you know, what? What we are not charging for and what we are charging for, right? Um, so as long as it still says that appropriately, then I don't need to make any changes.
During suspension of library, then we're not.
Yeah. Yeah, so we delete that. It says patrons will not be required to pay any fines um, over due items that are returned. Possible few clients like could do with lost items. And. Yeah.
I'm thinking. Although funds.
Yeah, I like that.
The papers and contest the same thing.
Uh, no, they're not. Okay.
Well, updated the um. First better out. It gives a statement rather than the. Action. Like you say, library fine rules and corrections.
Yeah, I need to delete that whole.
Yeah, actually, something like.
Not necessarily a motion anymore either.
Yeah. C W R's network membership has voted to. Remove, suspend. Not flying libraries.
Yeah.
Subsequently.
Yep.
I read now.
I mean, this is usually like a. Not a mission, mission statement, it's not work, but there's usually something, like which to introduce policy.
This is really fun. We had that random meeting. Of the library includes some like speech and, you know, worrying flaws from the, you know, this, this fifty people that were there. That was really cool. Yeah. Yeah. So I, I really love this policy. Um.
The dates of the bond on the five, are those?
Yeah. We used to do food for fines during the summer when we had a lot of people coming in for submarine program. Um, and then in November and December, because of the. Uh, we haven't collected food items for them. I think at one point we let people write a check to the food bank for the amount of their fines and then we passed it on. Um, so to say that we don't have a relationship with the food bank, it's just they weren't taking items because of the pandemic, we stopped taking them in for them as well. I actually would recommend it just be cut to library entities.
Yeah.
And then add in or the charitable donation, make a charity of your own or to the charity of your choice, local charity of your choice.
Yeah. Yeah.
Someone wants to write a check to mine.
Clear fine stature. Yeah. So maybe not telescope, uh, I thought for telescope.
It is the only piece of equipment we charge fines for.
Well, there's. We have a whole shelf sport of like stuff that can be checked out.
But that's the expensive thing.
Yeah.
It was grant funded, that we have people waiting for it because there's an astronomical event happening.
Yeah.
So it has to come back because the next person absolutely needs it for a specific date, which is the same reason we charge for museum passes. You need to get your pass back so that she can go. Yeah, on the next day. It's, it is actually a time sensitive thing. I mean, I can.
You can take time sensitive items such as. The people on their.
Telescope and museum passes, right? If you see library equipment, it's like, well, what, what else, right? There's a binoculars library equipment, right? It's not, it's really like a library things.
Sewing machines.
Yeah.
And people keep it.
Yeah.
But that's not like a, you know, I can only go on, you know, the state as opposed to, there's a meteor shower or you know, three planets are whining off. Pretty short. It's the only thing. I can check for bad circulation.
I mean, do you want to be more vague and say like certain library equipment, um, and then move it up to a procedure to like let someone know that, hey, by the way. This sewing machine now, the final attachment, you know, term of time.
Yeah, you could say due to the nature of time sensitivity. It's, it's nice to spell it out because I didn't understand. It's it's nice to spell it out because I didn't understand.
If you need to reread that.
That better? Through the nature of time sensitivity for some items, museum passes and some library of things. Materials. We'll still have. Yes. One was out for. I don't know. I think there's a question now, maybe this. And we can create a lot of do if they ask you. I would say something like that would just go to billing, but they still weren't as expensive to even to metal detectors were not as expensive for the value of the telescope that was. Purchased through grant funds and then.
Refurbished for.
Yeah, refurbished with extra strong lenses, right? All your gestational.
Yeah.
Good whole presentation.
I think I was the first one to get it. That was awesome.
We could see Saturn.
If you want to put any verbiage about. Commissions.
Yes, keep going.
Yeah.
He's gonna look at the food and beverage policy.
Forty.
If you're leaving.
Oh. I.
Turned audio.
I did, but it would not let me. So I left. Yes, if they want to buy it and then it will turn it all the way down.
So I would like to see something that's a little bit more philosophical or just the. I don't thought this was quite ready to go.
Yep.
But it could be for Jim. And then we start the new this one year July first. Really, we're done with forever. I think so, yeah. I can probably pull something together. It's a policy collection, so. That's hot. It would be easy to find you sort of philosophically why he thought of. Decrease people's barriers.
Read my letter that I wrote a few years ago. I can send that.
So two days.
I have to do it. I have to do it before I leave tonight, say. Okay. Any further discussion on the find free library policy? Okay. The next item on agenda is review dates. Current policies were adopted for consideration. Of updates. So that's the policy list. They sent from Google Docs, then I should download copy of that.
I think I downloaded it and sent out the PDF and then I needed the link so you can look at both and your own editors on my Google Doc. So if you thought, oh, we need a policy or whatever. I'm very proud and that a lot of these are very current, like it's two thousand on like everything that looked at in the last five years except. Response to accident policy, which was. An existing policy from when I started that basically said if a patron gets hurt, here is how staff respond. And if you went to offer, maybe call ambulance for you. No, really, we're going to call an ambulance for you. There's probably some kind of response to people falling and slipping in the parking lot of the branches. Twenty years ago. Instead, we might just want to create a general emergency response policy, but. Do you need to update? Overall.
Response to exit policy since procedure. As we take a look at. But we can, we can agree to review that one for the next.
I don't think I have to put up on the website.
So we want to review it.
Whether we make it a policy again. Okay. And starting from the oldest, the next oldest ones would be in twelve twenty nineteen, the many rights policy. I mean, that was, it's that one even in currently used, I guess.
Sure.
If there's still some things to be named.
Yeah. I think it in. And we encourage.
Yeah, so. Yes.
It wouldn't hurt just to look at it and go, yep, we still like this.
Okay. Okay, so because of the age, fine. Is there anything that's a priority in this list that we should review sooner than later? I think you already made a point to it. The rest are review the material selection policy as a priority. Anything else?
And then one. Definitely.
And then it. emic and pandemic policy wants this epidemic.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I think it could so be applicable, maybe.
Or something new. I mean, they say it's not going to be another hundred years.
Yeah.
We looked at reciprocal borrowing recently.
What is that?
Reciprocal borrowing says that if your library gets decertified because your town refuses to fund it, your card is not good at the Grafton Library. And you can't request materials to be delivered to you at your library anymore. Like we cut you off from the network because your town to vote to support from a budget standpoint. Come in and use computers, you play a set of programs, you can read in the building, but you can't check out and pick any materials if your library got decertified.
You don't, I mean, you don't have to be a Grafton resident. Get a Grafton.
That's correct. But if if it comes to me, you have to. I'm gonna pick on more. And it says low and we go to pick the card and we pick low, it says decertified by home spray. We can't do a card if you're used to building, but can I issue a card?
Oh, so.
But yeah.
Oh, so it's so much from the wall and they're like.
It's a very interesting.
Yeah, and this is, it also says that anything that we purchased, that first copy circulates to the rest of the network member libraries. We purchase a second one, we can make it just for Grafton residents. So it's 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 a C W R's policy really that every individual library has also done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not so much up to us to part of the network. Our pressure to.
Is that happening that you know?
Yeah, so we actually get when we run our monthly circulation reports, it'll like flag if we circulated to somebody from a decertified library or reminder. If you're checking people's cards and records, we don't do that. There's no. You know, there's no money. You'd have to be, I think, looking for it. Yeah. And I like, I don't know if the card would just would work or not work. I don't know if there's something at that level where if you went to self check, you had to be certified by library card. Possible. I know that you couldn't get a call. And and we're supposed to have a list and bar services should like on the wall. We don't circulate to. Those people, sorry. I think.
That's pretty.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a standpoint of we want information to be free, we want people to get everything that they want. But say if Grafton decides at town meeting, you know what? We go do this amazing facility. We can't give you a million dollars this year. We're giving you eight hundred thousand dollars good luck. And now we can't stay open since three hours a week. And now we can't meet our state aid requirement. Then we get decertified. And the punishments of the town doing that would be, well, now you can't, you can't just go to Millbury and check out extra Millbury. Millbury is going to turn away and say, no, nothing is supposed to. Hey, to support. And that pressure is the town to bring it back.
Yeah.
So it's in everybody's benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very, very interesting. I did not know that. So I would say that somebody who doesn't have a library in your town can certainly go visit it on the library, but. You know, they could potentially still get a library card if your town didn't have a library. So that's kind of like, it's like a gray area.
Sheer volume of books that are.
Yeah.
The system is crazy. They were saying we got twelve. Four cases of books that you say. Like it's it's in a hundreds.
Yeah.
It's on the four, five, six, seven hundred. Twenty thousand years that go in and out every every week.
Yeah.
It's picked up and shipped out every day. So for them to stop and check. This is like, it's just not.
Especially understanding. Okay.
Yeah, and what comes up when people try to get it. But there's another concern, you can have that, you can have a graphing card, but you can't go get a Millbury card, but you have to have one or the other within the network. If you have multiple accounts, because then you could be all crazy and go to every library, get a card at every library and check out fifty items in every library and I'm all the books. Not fair. Plus, you could lose the books and then. You know.
From when they were trying to get a library card at some place and they were, they were denied.
Yeah.
Because that they already have.
Yeah.
Just want a library from this library.
Yeah. Well, then you, yeah, that's fine. But then what has to happen is they have to call, like call Grafton and say, I removed you from your system, delete my account so that I can get one in Millbury. And sometimes it comes down to who has the best data. So. Because sometimes the databases, if they're paid for locally. This is really fascinating. So we put money into tutor.com and logging into tutor.com and make a free account, your library card has to start with two, seven, four, four, five, because it's a local resource. And we're eliminated, we pay three thousand dollars. We get so many sessions a year and we want to make sure that Grafton people are using them. And it's not fair. Again. Millbury can also write here dot com, but if all the Grafton slots get taken up by the next town, that's your local funding. Going somewhere else and.
Yeah.
So if everybody was in agreement that no, everybody can use everything, that's fine, but then. These like database providers and vendors get into. You know, you're sort of like gaining a system and that's not fair and money.
Yeah.
I can't budget dollars. It's really complicated.
But. One last thing. If you don't even, like if you, if your town never had a library, would you be allowed to go get?
Um.
Another.
Probably, yeah. If you weren't in the system at all and the issue was. You know, there's just never been a library, maybe. Pretty sure there's actually more than one library to town, state, because we are, you know. All right, in Massachusetts.
I just wasn't.
He's like. You at one point have like seven libraries. I want to say that there's a town on the Cape, they have three. So this is more likely that. There's more than one library.
Kind of love Massachusetts, right?
Yeah. And it's not a great, I don't know. It's very cute and cozy and old school, but it's not actually a sustainable model and all the research is on. And this is why, you know, we did this in two thousand and ten before I got here. Those branches, you can tell already all the resources are accessible. So. So.
Okay, so.
All that, right? There is discussion.
Policy.
I still have it also just to go up to video. That was upper echelon library. Actually, the website.
Yeah. Here's the response to accident policy is is up there as a library policy. It's like under a separate section for some reason.
Okay, because it's more internal procedure. It was never essentially. Something this director wrote it probably in response to somebody not getting an ambulance.
Yeah. Okay.
And this draft is updated because it says A and D's and we're going to have those for a few years.
Okay.
But. I think it's gonna be, it should be procedure, really. Okay.
Okay. So what, what are we reviewing for the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think we decided one view and one. Review. At least I still have the policies that we haven't written.
Yeah.
Some are in process, but. Kind of along the lines of having material selection, we also need a this a policy that says. You know, that putting things on display is not necessarily an endorsement of the materials. It's just. We don't have a volunteer policy. We don't have a program policy. And we don't need those things. We don't have an examiner. Is there any? Concern you think of this policy and. Consider coming on? And again, I think it kind of goes with caution. I found a really good draft. Those are three sentences and.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that might be something to. Like or tanks. Yeah, where it isn't. So that's in place before. And I think the next program policy, because we do some challenges of like, we have a program for a certain age group and it's developed because of. Where we think they are developmentally and everybody's kids precious, but there's a need range for a reason. And people sort of fight us on that. We also have trouble with. People coming in late to programs and expecting to get let in and it creates a disruption. Beyond time or within the first ever ten minutes. It should happen hourly to a certain later program. It's helpful for the staff. Thanks to this, some of that information. Sign up for the next one. But today, no, you can't go. No, after that, for that interview at some point.
Yeah, and and sort of verbiage in terms of, you know. Versus non dropping style programming, I'm sure is already kind of been communicated. There's, there's things that are like color me calm, you know, that's like, come and tell her with us. It's like, sorry, you're right. It's sexy. Can't come color me calm.
But even in that, it's like if they're having it midday for adults and they're playing. And, yeah. A toddler comes into the program, one coloring sheet is going to be too complicated for their current environment. And if they are creating a disturbance, then that's not what you call from prison. So we are specific, like for every program we put on our calendar, it'll say whether it's drop in or registration required. It'll say if it's like, you know, in person or room or hybrid. Perfect. Passive programs with your kind of do it anytime, like the scavenger hunt in the children's room or make your space stuff like that's not really listed on the calendars. And then for the youth programs, we always include really brief explanation of the unattended child policy to make it clear that if the kid is zero to seven. Here it has to be in eye or arms reach proximity for eight to twelve, just to be in the building, but you're not going to drop off your nine year old in the grocery shopping. Because the staff over the program are not able to keep an eye on the child who might look from the room, maybe just to go to the bathroom. Okay, the child is. Thirteen enough. So. So even within the calendar, like very explicit.
Okay. Any other further discussion? I know we kind of jumped right into discussion of policies to review at the next meeting.
I started, I started material selection.
Yeah.
You have to start this. Well, this would be for, you know, for our June meeting, we're ready to start talking about display. Any programs for July, material selection. Material selection.
Any further discussion on? Really, any policies to review at the next meeting?
We should be finalizing by three.
Yeah, by three. Yeah. Interior selection policy and. Seeing anything you're able to kind of update for us, right? At the next meeting. Okay. Right. We have any public input? No hands raised? Moving to the side of the agenda is next meeting date. Wednesdays are good for me. Thursdays are good for me. Baseball season, I agreed to coach and they have baseball on Monday, Tuesday and Friday. Yeah, so. I don't know, do those dates still work?
I'm trying to get on.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're both here anyway.
And I mean, late to the ones, I mean, by a couple minutes, like. Yeah, so. But other, and then like. About together or something like that, but other than that.
Yes.
Seven's pretty good if you don't mind me being like a minute late to.
Yeah, we can call a meeting to order without you because we'll have a forum as long as it's three of us.
Yeah, because this is the perfect time.
Yep, you probably missed me reading the remote meetings guideline. Okay, so the next trustee meeting is on the twenty fourth for, for May. I don't think we need to meet ahead of that trustee meeting. So I would say the next meeting would be. Probably June seventh, if that works for people.
And then I think the last question, so we had posted this as Zoom.
Yeah.
And then I was like, well, we're going to sit together anyway. So if the members want to, you're welcome to come in and join us. GCTV does not love a meeting owl that we're using, but a wrinkle is if we want the professional recording, we have to be at the municipal center and I'm the acting department head.
Yeah.
So we could meet like this again in June. I would appreciate it. And then in July.
Yeah. Is that, is that difficult though? Be away from the library to be.
Not after July first, because in theory, the previous acting department head will be coming back. Yeah, and I've gotten somebody to cover for me for.
We'll agree to meet in the same capacity. Hybrid, right? Personally, I'm Zoom on the seventh. We are, we're on.
Yeah, that just wasn't intended to hybrid me. To sort of work out.
We're, we're attendants.
Today, we're actually, I was having trouble, but otherwise.
Yeah, so right here in the corner. Okay. Very good. So what for next meeting, June seventh? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Right, all in favor? Sorry, any discussion? Sure. All right, okay, hearing none, all in favor, Aaron, I, John.
John, I.
And Debbie. All right, I declare the motion carried. Yeah.
Thanks, everyone. We should have appreciated it.
It was nice to meet. Our Audrey, our intern, is that it?
Yeah, she's, she's a grad student, high school graduating this year, working twenty hours a week for six weeks, so about halfway through, been amazing.
Thank you for all the help, Audrey. All right, have a good night, everyone.